Okay. I now call the August 19th meeting of the WSSD Board to order. In addition to, well, nobody is joining us by phone tonight. Okay? So we have seven board members present tonight. Okay. In opening, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Palmer.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. So this evening, I'd like to cover two particular items. And the first one I'd like to talk about is actually the board agenda itself. And you see Ms. Q. going over to the computer, and I'm asking her to assist me tonight. Bear with me one moment, I'm just waiting for that to come up on the screen. Mistress Attorney, did you say it is coming up? So as that's coming up, the reason why I wanted to highlight this is, we have a new style board agenda for you. The content is the same, but the delivery is a little bit different, and the platform by which we're going to deliver it is different as well. So if you went on to our website, and where you would typically pull down your board agenda, you will see a link to Board Docs. And Board Docs is the platform that we're going to be using now to deliver our board agendas, our minutes, and we're also going to move our policies to this platform as well. It will give you a robust search engine, and it'll provide all of the information for you at one place, and it will be a link through our website. So as Ms. Q. is at the computer, if you were going on to look for tonight's board meeting, you would get, enter our site and hit the Meetings tab. And once you go into the meetings, we only have one meeting published right now, but you would see that our regular meeting is this evening, if you would click, and then you can view our agenda. When you look at the agenda, the layout is exactly the same as we have at our meeting now. You heard Dr. Huff call the meeting to order. We are able to take attendance of our board members present, and she called for the opening where we did the Pledge of Allegiance. We are at the superintendent's report, and we will move through our agenda the same way that we do, but the way you would look at it will be a little bit different. So following my report, if Dr. Huff has any board announcements, she will make them, and then we will move on to our focus topics. We will have two this evening. The first on elementary scheduling, and the second on high school scheduling. We will have then our first public comment section, which is for a response to any items that are on the Agenda for Action, and then we will move into our action items on the agenda. The first, approving our minutes, and then I want to focus on the next one. We have a number of sections on our agenda. We have minutes, personnel, curriculum, policy, and finance. Same broad categories. However, if you go up to Personnel, you will see a number of items on our agenda, as they always have been, starting with Leaves of Absence and going all the way down until we get to the approval on item number M of the Fall Supplemental Appointments. And then at the end of each section that has numerous items, you will see an item that recaps all of those for convenience when we are doing the minutes, so that we'll have all of the items before that, so Dr. Huff can take them as one consent agenda for all of the items that precede it. Ms. Q., if you would go up to the first item, for Leaves of Absence, just to give you an example of, if you were looking at one of the agenda items, if you were to click on the left side at any of the agenda items, you will see the whole item appear. We've tried to put the body of some of the attachments that we've used in the past, we've tried to put them right into the agenda itself. And on some of our longer items, such as when we have contracts, we've included them as attachments, but for the most part, we've tried to put everything within the body of the agenda. So if you just wanted to look online, you could view it just the way we're doing it, or if you're one of those people that would like to see what's just the layout for the agenda, kind of that table of contents, you could print the agenda. So when you hit the print icon, you can look at a simple agenda, which is basically a quick recap of the topics that are going to be on the agenda for this evening. And you can see this in the simple agenda style. Alternatively, if you'd like to see everything, you could look at the detailed agenda, which takes you through everything that we are going to do, the content of which would have been on our prior agendas. It's just presented in a different format. And then this will be the shell for our minutes, no different than we currently do it. Same content, different platform, little bit different view. But I wanted to situate everybody with that now, because if you were looking at the paper agenda tonight, it looks very different than agendas in the past. It's just a matter of us moving to the new platform. So it takes a little bit getting used to some of the additional language that's up at the top of each agenda item, but I think once people look at it, you will have more information readily searchable for you. And then when we move our board policies to this platform, it's a very robust search engine, and I think parents and taxpayers will very much like the new platform. But that's kind of a look at Board Docs, and we're still new with it, trying to get it as finely tuned as we can, but this is the first time that we're launching a full agenda. And then the second item, moving off of Board Docs, is I'd like to talk about one of our board goals. So on May 13th of this year, the Wallingford-Sworthmore School Board voted to begin a study on adolescent sleep needs and school start times within our district. Over the summer, we've built a webpage with initial information about the study. We've included inquiry questions, a set of FAQs, various committees that are in the works, a timeline of our events, current research, and a link to the Regional Adolescent Sleep Needs Coalition. We're dedicated to ensuring that we fully recognize and evaluate the issue of adolescent sleep in our district. On September 9th, parents will receive information on a task force that will be put in place to gain stakeholder input. Parents can demonstrate interest in serving on the task force using the link that will be provided at that time. The link is not available now, it will be available September 9th. Parents can also visit the Sleep and School Start Times webpage under the About WSSD section of our website. There will be opportunities for community engagement and participation with a national speaker. There will be a regional panel discussion night, an email dedicated specifically for input on this important topic, and multiple stakeholder surveys. Frequent updates on how we progress on this study will be provided through the website. It will be provided at school board meetings and other public meetings that are dedicated specifically to the topic. It's important that I say, no decisions have been made, and I'm going to say that again before any rumors start, no decisions have been made regarding school start times. We believe that with multiple voices, and a carefully planned process, and a system for ongoing input and feedback, that we'll be able to reach a resolution on the study that makes the most sense for our community and our students. And before I say to Dr. Huff that I am done, there has been no decision on the sleep time study, and I can't say it enough. Now, Dr. Huff, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. So I do have some board announcements. The board met in executive session on July 8th, 11th, and 29th to discuss personnel matters. On July 22nd, we had a scheduled regular board meeting, which was canceled due to weather. During that strong storm, the power was out in the district for 14 hours, I think, maybe 15 hours, as well as many board members were stuck on the wrong side of a down tree on the train line. So that meeting was canceled. As a result, tonight's agenda is extra lengthy, so, and there's a lot going on with schools starting next week. And I am also transitioning to a new agenda, so please bear with me as we work our way through this, so. Okay, for focus topics, we have two focus topics tonight. Dr. Palmer, would you like to get us started?
I would. As an administrative team, we are guided by our district goals and priorities, and we have been working very hard to align our building priorities with our district priorities, and we have been particularly focused on our systemic supports for student. Specifically, we want to ensure that all of our students have access to similar opportunities to support their success. One area that presented an opportunity for further review was our elementary schedules. Tonight, Dr. Jennifer Gaudioso, Director of Elementary Ed, will highlight the work in this particular area. So Jen, whenever you're ready.
All right, good evening, and thank you for having us here. I'm joined this evening by our three elementary principals, Dr. Angela Tuck, Dr. Gabe Savage, and Al Heinley. We are really excited about the work that we've done. We have, we're giving you an update on where we are with this ongoing work in elementary scheduling. Principals have worked to finalize schedules over the last weeks of summer, and tonight we're sharing a bit of the good news about all they've accomplished to help us move forward to support those different goals in a variety of areas. I'm going to apologize in advance for reading from my notes, as you said, there is so much going on. We have new teacher induction tomorrow. I don't trust myself, so bear with me. So first, you know, one of the questions that many people may have is, why would we start to look at our schedule? What were we hoping to achieve through this? We wanted first and foremost to really have a careful look at how can we best achieve equity across all three schools by ensuring all students across the districts, across the district have access to similar opportunities that support student success. We also recognized a need for some refinement to support prioritized areas. We wanted to create schedules that allow teachers to have dedicated time for individualized learning to support students needing interventions or learning extensions. We wanted to do this in a way that was aligned across grades and across buildings, and we wanted to maximize resources to provide the greatest supports for students. We wanted to protect core instruction by ensuring this individualization, which includes groupings, possible pullouts, such as OT, or speech, or music. We wanted to protect that core instruction by making sure that those experiences happened outside the core block, and they don't prevent student access to core instruction. We also wanted to the greatest degree possible to maintain common teacher planning time, so that teacher teams can still have those collegial opportunities for collaborative instructional planning. And finally, we wanted to make room for the targeted improvements in social-emotional learning and mental health supports, as well as the elementary computer coding, the pilots that are about to take place, I think I shared in our spring STEM update. And this was a tall order, when you look at a finite amount of time. So how did we start? Well, we started the discussions quite some time ago, beginning of the school year, I think, was the very beginning. We started working with CCIU, as they helped us look at MTSS, and look at bringing in PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and really trying to refine our academic interventions called RTI. We have the skeletons and the bones of it, and have fallen away because of some scheduling variability. So in the spring, principals and I met with CCIU. We worked to identify scheduling priorities that would support that long-term work. Principals surveyed teachers. We prepared a survey from CCIU. We also used some from a consultant we were very fortunate to work with. He is the guru of scheduling to support, really instructional design that supports student achievement. His name is Michael Reddick, and he helped us design surveys to collect information from teachers. And we spent the spring refining the instructional minutes and engaged in several feedback groups with teachers. I met with grade chairs, principals met with their teams, and then from there, we spent several long days in one small room with our consultant, and really were excited by the process and the outcome. And since then, so I'm going to share the outcome with you, but since then, principals have been engaged in feedback loops with teachers, and the feedback has been largely very positive, so it's very exciting. So the specific outcomes. What did we achieve? After the work, we now have all three elementary schools with aligned schedules. All three elementary schools now have similar opportunities for interventions and extensions outside the core block, core instructional block. All three buildings have aligned and dedicated time for social-emotional learning, or what we call SEL programming. All three buildings have schedules that have maximized the allocation of resources to support individual student needs. And that maximization of resources includes the way we're using guidance counselors, the intervention block, instructional specialists, and I'll talk a little bit about that. There are even further opportunities within this schedule that we can start building on from here, and start taking advantage of as we refine and develop PBIS and MTSS. So from here, we can grow even further. So what changed? We used to have a variety of schedule models. We now have one common tool for scheduling, one template, and this increases clarity about the schedules across the buildings. It also more clearly identifies blocks of core instruction, so that special educators and specialists who are trying to schedule with teachers to support individualized needs, they can see more clearly where is the core. So that just improves system efficiency as teachers are designing supportive schedules. The alignment of the amount of time available for the intervention block is going to help us to better align the instruction that occurs in the intervention block. Okay? So when you have three buildings that have different models for intervention, different timing of it, different instructional minutes for it, it's very difficult to work with teachers to support what should be in the block and align those opportunities. Additionally, working with the scheduling model from Mr. Reddick, principals really were able to work with large blocks of time, so that teachers have these uninterrupted blocks of core instruction time, instead of fragments and slivers of blocks that are less than ideal, you know, still valuable instructional time, but we certainly wanted to work towards the ideal. Every grade level now has time for these morning meetings. We have dedicated, and the morning meetings, I'll back up a little bit, these are part of responsive classroom, which is an approach to social-emotional programming. Classroom meetings are one of the key elements, structures of the approach. It integrates academics, classroom community building experiences, games that build connection, inclusion, supportive strategies for effectively managing conflict and communication. Over time, we're even going to be looking to this block of time in these morning meetings to incorporate student learning and critical thinking about issues of anti-bias, anti-bullying, cultural proficiency. So this block of time, where we create a safe space for students to learn and think and be in community, is really going to, we're going to get a lot of mileage out of as we look to the future. So this is a nice building block for us going forward. The final change in the schedule is the inclusion of guidance into the special area rotation. It's going to change a little bit how guidance instruction is taken place. Instead of one person in each building doing it, we're going to have one dedicated staff member who's providing the lesson instruction across the three buildings. This gives us some consistency in instruction, and really some ability to enhance curriculum and program there. And it frees up the building-level guidance counselor to work with individualized student needs, to support mental-emotional health programming, and really offer individualized student supports as needed in the schools. Now, to make this work, all three schools are on a four-day rotation for special areas, and doing this allowed us to achieve goals, preserve the greatest degree possible, a common planning time, and we were also able to eliminate the need for 2.2 positions that we needed at SRS as the population had been increasing. So we really felt like, you know, the changes we made really moved us forward by leaps and bounds. So how does the intervention block, or the IE block, work? IE, we're using to refer to an intervention-extension block. Within a building, intervention blocks have staggered scheduling, and this is one way to maximize resources. We ensure interventionists are available across all grade levels. The dedicated 60 minutes for IE, or intervention-extension, allows division into two 30-minute blocks, one language arts, one math, and this allows targeted personalized supports for students as needed. It's also where we can put opportunities for OT, speech, PT, music, instructional music as well, and enrichment. Teachers can also capitalize on multidisciplinary opportunities within that block. Now, the alignment of the grade-level intervention block maximizes the resources by allowing shared responsibility across a grade-level team, opportunities for rotations, for more targeted student support, and it moves us more closely to what the state calls a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS. We still have, you know, this is a building block getting there, so we have work to do. And to support the research-based design of certain interventions, we really need consistent frequency of opportunity for students to have this intervention, so that we're really helping to monitor their progress and close any learning gaps. Some examples of what might happen in that intervention block. What specifically might happen is going to depend on the students in that cohort. So it might depend on the needs of a teacher's group, it might depend on the needs of a grade level, if the teachers are sharing children during the intervention block. This is just a sample here. Teachers may have a small group rotation based on recent classroom data or district benchmark data. In some cases, students may rotate to another classroom teacher during the block. Other students may go visit the reading specialist, learning support teacher, enrichment teacher, music teacher. In some cases, those teachers may push into classrooms. Now, principals have designed the schedule so that as much as possible, these core extension blocks are adjacent to the core block, so that it truly can be an extension of learning. And if you think of it in terms of the focus that we've had on differentiation, and as teachers are providing core instruction, which is what we want every student, regardless of where they are as a learner, to have access to, from there, there may be differentiation. The differentiation is what may start in the core block and then be able to extend into the intervention block as students need it. Teachers can incorporate computer stations, non-computer stations, that provide opportunities for students to practice or work on what they need. And this is also where some students are engaged in targeted research-based interventions with careful progress monitoring to improve achievement and close those learning gaps. Here's a sample of first grade. What's nice about this is you get a picture of how there's the, we've labeled in the schedule what core instruction is. So the key with an intervention block is you want to make sure that no new instruction takes place there, because if students miss the new core grade-level instruction, you're widening the gap, right? The day I taught multiplication, you weren't here. Okay, so we want to make sure that the core instruction everyone's present for. So core needs to be clearly labeled for our specialist and our interventionist. After that differentiation can occur, and then the core extension or intervention block allows us to take further instructional strategies that meet student needs. So clearly identified in the schedule now is core, and then ELA, which is the rest of the block where instruction differentiation may take place, and then the extension or intervention block. And this is where any pullouts that are scheduled are going to occur. Lunch is same as what we've had, recess is the same, but again, you'll see another intervention extension block after math. So this gives us the opportunity, if students have needs in reading and math, to provide both, where you have one intervention block, you know, you're kind of deciding which is the greater need for many students, and that's a challenge. This allows us to meet needs in both areas. It also allows us to do it on a rotation, should that child also need speech, or also need some behavioral support. So we have the opportunity to really be flexible. And then specials, writing, and social studies. Now, one thing that we've been careful about here, you'll see the student code of conduct. You know, we've committed to recess is very critical. We've recognized how important it is. It is not something that is part of disciplinary response, in terms of removing recess. One thing we recognize is that while minutes in the day are attached to our goals for learning, we know that students, as little people, need breaks, they need cognitive breaks, and teachers are professionals, and we're leaving it to their judgment to determine where do those breaks go. So if a teacher decides, I've got a long morning and I need a 10-minute break for these little guys, they take their 10-minute break, and we're calling those cognitive breaks. They can engage in play, they can engage in some of their responsive classroom activities. It really could just be a social break. It might be one of those engaging activities. We have a couple teachers who are just masterful at those energizers that are social-engaging and get students up and moving. And as professionals, we're leaving teachers with the autonomy, so we don't have those types of breaks shown here through the day, but we anticipate them. And this way, the teacher can decide, am I going to do a bunch of two-minute breaks through the day, because this is one of those days? Are we going to take a longer break, because this is where it fits best? So what are the next steps? Well, principals will continue to fine-tune with teachers. We'll be implementing for this year, and we'll continue to align the instruction within the intervention blocks as we develop and refine PBIS, MTSS, further technology integration, as well as really enhancing our use of data to support both identification of student needs for instruction during those blocks, and the progress monitoring to see if we're closing the gaps that we've identified during those blocks. So any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
Jen, can you go back to the schedule?
Yeah.
Is there any research that shows that the core subjects, math, writing, social studies, science are after lunch than prior, before lunch in the morning? Why, a lot of times, kids, especially, they're very tired in the afternoon, and they might not want to focus, they might be better attentive, focusing on it in the morning?
Yeah, we've gone back and forth about that over the years. We have some grade levels that feel like, and when you look at math research, they will say, you know, put math in the morning. When you look at other research, it's, you know, whoever the teacher is, you know, it's kind of, they pick the priority. We do have teacher input here, and some grade levels do feel like there's certain topics that definitely have to be in the morning. One of the nice things about the way that our math program is designed is it's very, there's a lot of opportunity for collaboration, so some of the way that it's, that instruction looks is different from just the sitting, just sitting and not really being engaged. So there is, you can probably find research to say something on either side. I do know I have seen some for math. It is difficult to put everything in the morning, however, so we've really let teachers give some input there, and we've had a lot of success with math in the afternoon and the morning.
Does this schedule give any flexibility to the classroom teacher, where they could move something from social studies or science to the morning instead of the afternoon?
In some cases, it does, and the principals have already had those conversations when we were working with the specialists. There were points where I can remember, you know, somebody saying, well, I know my first grade's going to want to flip these two. So as they were looking at things, they were looking for those opportunities. So yes. I can't say that that's true for everything, because there are some things that all of a sudden now it's going to impact your special schedule, and so there's some constraints.
Well, the teacher would know their classroom best and the student's best.
Right, right.
What would be best for their students.
Right. So to the degree that teachers have input and can make those suggestions, absolutely, which is why the principals started early in the spring, collecting input. So some of the requests were for things like that. We want this in the morning, or we want this here, or, you know, that sort of thing. So some of that input was collected and would be continued as we're piloting or using this this year. I think that's something that would be continually under review, is this working for us? Yeah, it's a great question.
Ms. Walkman?
Jen, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate what you guys, and to the principals, what you've done here. I'm the parent of kids who've had lots of pullout opportunities. I love that we're pushing it into the classroom instead of pulling out as much. I'm especially happy to see the math extension. I know we've had the language extension for a long time, and I think it's amazing. We've seen amazing results from it, so I'm so excited to see it on the math side, too.
Good, good.
So thank you for the work, I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, and you may remember a couple, two, three years ago, we did that search for math intervention program, we're able to share that with you, and we were really fighting for time in the intervention block, because if students had literacy and math needs, it was really, which can we do? This really gives us the greatest flexibility, so we're really excited about it. Any other questions?
So I just have one more question, just to make sure that I'm understanding the schedule, because this is a sample schedule for first grade.
This is actually, this is from one of the buildings, and I forget which one, but yes.
So it may not be, I mean, even the first grade schedule may not be the same in each of the buildings, but they'll be similar?
Yes, they're pretty close. The exception might be, you know, if somebody's special was earlier in the day, but in terms of the allocation of time, yes.
So then if we were to look at, say, the sample schedule for third grade, would it have all the classes in the same order, or would things be jumbled around?
No, right, it would be in different, right, different order. And, I mean, it's a pretty, and I went back and forth, should I include a little bit of a, it's massive Excel sheets, but we could share that if you were interested. It's pretty, it's pretty complex, but kind of exciting that we have something for every teacher, like you could, you can really see things down to the detail level.
So it's not that every elementary student is getting math right after lunch?
No, 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 no. Right, exactly, right, right.
Okay, all right.
No, that's a good question. Anything else? Okay?
All right, thank you, Dr. Reddick.
Well, thank you.
All right, Dr. Palmer, what's next?
So staying on the topic of scheduling, we're going to move from the elementary scheduling to the high school scheduling, and there has been a lot of talk in the community. And there has been a lot of talk in the community about how we schedule our high school and what does that process look like, pretty much from beginning to end. And Dr. Brown is with us to be able to highlight very differently than what Dr. Guardioso just highlighted. How do we schedule at the high school? And I'm going to start you off with, it's a very iterative process, isn't it?
Yes, scheduling at the high school level is very complex. And I'm here today to talk you through that process and hopefully make some sense of how we end up to the position that we're in, where now our students have schedules. Many of them have been trying to make some adjustments to those schedules today, but they have schedules. So the process at the high school level really starts in both the fall and the spring with teacher recommendations. This will happen towards the end of the fall semester. And really, by virtue of the timing of this, is usually February in the spring semester, where teachers will recommend students for the next course in sequence. So to give you an example, if I am teaching a 10th grade honors English class, I will have a day where, you know, we will talk with our students, and that will be about the next sequence. That could be about electives, and we'll make recommendations. So a lot of those students will move on to, say, English 11 honors. It could be in a college prep class, students could move up to honors. Students could remain at the college prep level. So that's really what the recommendation process is, is the teachers make determinations as far as recommendations for students next. Also in the spring, students submit elective requests. And by this, so for the, for the, this past school year, so for the schedule that we have now, this was done in MMS, it will transition into Power School for next school year. But the students will input the courses that they would like to take to fill their schedule beyond the core. So for example, if a student wanted to take, you know, a foods class, that's an elective-level course, they would sign up for that as an elective. And that goes into consideration when we determine how many sections of particular courses that we'll have. So the core sectioning, that's typically done with the building leadership. You know, that's our administrative team with our department chairs. And in that case, you know, I just mentioned, students will sign up for electives. So if we had, you know, 50 students sign up for a particular elective, we would make a determination at that point about how many of those particular courses would we typically try to run for the next year to maximize getting those 50 students in those seats. This year, because we transitioned into Power School, the process also included several Power School trainings for our administrative team, so we could actually learn how to do what we used to do in MMS. In that process, you'll see that star. It's actually going to occur a lot of times on this slide because we had many sessions. And just trying to get the program to do what we need to do. So after we look at the sections that we needed to run for particular courses, we also have to look at, you know, our available staffing. And on a year-to-year basis, that conversation is going to rotate. That includes talking about, you know, teachers who are retiring, looking at certifications for different teachers to see how can we meet the needs of our students. And we look at, you know, different scheduling parameters. So I mentioned to you earlier, talking about 50 students in an elective. Let's say, for example, if there were 200 students in a core-level class, we would look to see, the program, the software itself, won't generate a schedule unless we set, for example, the number of courses in there that will need to run. So for those 200 students, you know, we may set eight, nine, or 10 classes, and then it will fill those classes. So by parameters, we look at how many students are signed up to take particular courses, and then we look to see how many courses we can offer in particular areas. So that was really how we started the process. And I put first pass because that was the first, the first go-around for the particular schedule. This year, we also learned how to input the data into Power School. And by inputting the data into Power School for this year, you know, when you start with a new software program, you know, we had to go to the detail of putting in the classrooms that teachers teach in, you know, and the things that we only have to do once. But we had to do a lot of that this year. How many periods per day does each class run? So there's a lot of programming things that had to be done. Some could be manually, some had to be manually inputted. Others could transfer in nicely from MMS. And then we had to build a schedule. Now, the building of the schedule was actually the complicated part because with all the information inputted, then the computer would really generate where these classes run. And by doing that, it maximized getting students in classes. And then, once that's done, we would then review that schedule as a building-level team with our central office staff, just to make sure that we have the staffing that we need to run the schedule that we've generated for the coming year. The next step for us would be to publish that information to our teachers so that they know what they are going to be teaching, followed by, you know, making sure that the students load in. So we mentioned one thing was building a schedule, and that's saying if we, we'll use that number 200 again. If we have 200 classes, or 200 students in a particular class, we may have eight, nine, or 10 sections. The next part is to make sure that all of them get into specific sections of classes, because it doesn't always work out where we have the same number of students in every class. So by virtue of the fact that sometimes we have more sections. So for example, our 12th grade, our 12th grade class is our smallest class in the building. So you would think that by that time in their process, they should be able to get whatever class that they would like to take, their seniors. However, it actually works in the opposite because the further into these courses where they advance, there's actually fewer of them as they get to the more advanced levels. So that, that process in itself can complicate how students get into particular classes. If something runs once per day, it may conflict with another course that they want to take. And that's really what loading does, is it shows us who gets the number of courses that they requested. So each student should have eight classes on their schedule. Some of those students, and when we built our schedule, this number was around 100. I think just slightly higher, that didn't have a full eight classes. And the next part, where you see reviewing the schedule and reviewing student schedules for balance, that's where we go back in individually and try to make some shifts to make sure that we have everybody with eight classes. That process, we do over the summer, and we continue to look at over the summer. And committing the schedule was a task that we had to do in Power School, which essentially says, we're done building, and we're now ready to turn into the 1920 year. So every, so the information was live. And then after that, we would make changes, so reviewing schedules for balance. We also look at, we try to avoid having students with, let's say, four core area classes in one semester. So looking at schedules for balance at this time of year, really over the summer, as we look at these schedules individually, where there are students in that scenario, we try to make adjustments if we can. Some students will choose, by virtue of their electives, to add a second core area class, so they'll double in math or in a science course. And, you know, in those cases, we can't, we don't always ensure, you know, balance because of the electives that those students chose. But we try to do that as we go through the process. And then finally, last week, the students' schedules were published on Power School. So by now, they should all be able to see those live for Power School. So the end result, some of the questions that we fielded was specifically talking about large classes. As of last week, when I looked at the information, we only had two classes that were scheduled that had 30 students in them. And one of those was AP Calculus AB, the other was AP Calculus BC. And one of the reasons, as, you know, I'll highlight for those particular classes, as you advance in sequence, it becomes, we have fewer of those courses that run, and it becomes more difficult to get into those courses at the specific time of day. And by that, by that point, we wouldn't be able to run three, four, or five of those courses to make sure that, you know, we didn't have 30 students in each of, in those classes. Now, there's one class each of 30 students. So what you'll notice over, if you look at all of our classes, is that the size information overall is substantially similar to where it's been over the past several years. And again, that ties back to the fact that when you have fluctuation in our class sizes, so there's about 200 in, I actually have this number. There's 250 students in the 12th grade. The, there's 332 in 11th grade, 321 in 10th grade, and then 292 in the 9th grade. So there's obviously going to be more classes in the younger grade level in the core area classes. And there's fluctuation amongst them. So the overall picture of the schedule is, you know, fairly similar to what it's looked like over the past several years. And that's really the process, as I summed it up, that typically takes place. You know, we try to wrap that up in the spring before the end of the school year. And we usually will publish schedules to students during that second week of August. At some point, it was a little bit later this year, it was Thursday, just because we had a little bit of delay in learning Power School and adjusting. But I, I'm fairly more proficient in Power School now than I was in May. So, you know, I think I could, that, there's a lot of people in our building who could say that same thing. But I think we're very comfortable with where the schedules are.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Do we have any questions?
I have a question, a couple of questions. Dr. Brown, is there a minimum cutoff point for the number of students per elective? For instance, a lot of colleges, universities, they see it economically feasible. If the class has eight students or six students, they drop the class. Do we have any type of thing like that where, if it's an elective, there's a minimum student, where students don't select that elective? What's the minimum cutoff point we have?
So we don't have a firm cutoff. We start that list at 15 and kind of look from there to see what those numbers look like. And there are some cases where if there's a, if there's a new course, let's say, for example, that, you know, may have nine students in it. And one of them, I know our Pan-African Studies course has nine students in it. We're trying to get that one off the ground. We might take a chance on that because we think it can be successful. And if it runs, more students will take it. If there's a course over the years, and I know Latin was one, that if the enrollments are consistently lower, we'll do some historical review and, you know, determine not to run that course for the next year. But on a year-to-year basis, we typically will look at anything under 15. And on, from that point, on a case-by-case basis, if there's something else that could have a greater value to, you know, the schedule as a whole, then we would make a determination whether or not we'd run that course.
If a teacher that's teaching elective and that elective is canceled, are they usually assigned to duty or moved into a core subject area?
I guess that would depend on their certification area. So if there was a, if there was a teacher who had versatility that could pick up a course at a middle, at the middle school, they could pick up a course at the middle school. If they had the ability to teach a core area, they could. Otherwise, you know, at the, at the district level, we'd look at and see if they could be used on another form of assignment.
Thanks.
Can you, can you give an example of how some classes that have a small number of people interested in them have actually been combined together?
Yeah, so one of the examples this year is in our AP Studio Art 3D. That course is running at the same time as ceramics, Ceramics II and Ceramics III. So the AP Studio Art course is all year. I believe there's about, there's under 10 students in that class. And at Ceramics II and Ceramics III, each of those has, you know, a handful of students in them as well. So rather than not run those courses, we have the ability to, we have a very talented ceramics teacher who can differentiate his instruction and manage those two courses at the same time. It's typically in elective classes that you see that, where you have, you know, you have lower numbers and you can make those kind of mergers. Just, and again, the goal is to get, to allow more students to take the courses that they want. Because if we said, if we said we weren't going to do that, then we'd have to make a determination as to whether we would run Ceramics II, Ceramics III, or, you know, the AP Studio Art 3D.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
It's amazing how much work goes into getting the school year off to start. Thank you, thank you both, and thank you all of you. It's not very often we have this many principals in the building at once. So thank you and good luck in the, in the next few weeks. So now we have time for comments from the audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak tonight related to topics that are on the agenda? Then our first item for action is the approval of the minutes from the June 24th meeting. And I so move, do we have a second? Dr. Rieger, any discussion on the minutes from June? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, then the item passed seven to zero. I think I got it correct, okay. So in personnel, we have several items for action. And this is where it gets complicated because of our new format of the agenda. I'm going to try to make the, I guess, the flow of the meeting is similar to how it has been in the past. So what I say is going to seem very much like what I have said in the past, with the exception of what I'm about to say right now, which is asking the board members if there are any individual items you would like to carve out for extended discussion or separate voting. Okay. All right, so in personnel, we have the approval of leaves of absences for two employees, a high school math teacher and an instructional support person at NPE. We have the approval of several appointments. In certified staff, we have Brian Pichnally, health NPE at the middle school; Sophie Sheintalk, first grade at SRS; Sarah Elksheek, music at the middle school; Jenna Grabiak, a social worker; Sophie Mulliskey, second grade teacher at Wes; Rachel Powers, fourth grade teacher at SRS; Gabriel Raviness, kindergarten at NPE; Leslie Labes, English Language Arts at the middle school; Erica Weaver, school counselor at Wes. In non-certified staff, we have Patricia Lee and Elizabeth McCambe, instructional support at Wes; Eileen Marion and Burget Laurent, instructional support at NPE. We have the approval of additions and changes to the 2019 summer school program appointments. We have the approval of payment for unused sick days for recent retirees. We have the approval of a renewal agreement with the substitute teacher service. We have the approval of changes of assignment for Carrie Reese and Andrew Benzing at the high school for this school year only. We have the approval of changes of assignment for this school year and ongoing for teachers, counselors, and instructional support personnel as listed in the agenda. We have approval of changes in assignment and salary status for Megan McCullough and Gina Ross. We have the approval of an addition to the 2019 summer curriculum and development work. We have the approval of the summer Power School training and development work. We have the approval of non-staff, homebound, and tutor appointments. We have the approval of the appointment of Tom McLaughlin as district safety coordinator. And we have the approval of the fall athletics supplemental appointments, all as attached or described in the agenda. Do I have a motion? Dr. Rieger, do I have a second? Ms. Semino, any discussion on these items? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, the item is passed seven to zero. We have one item for action in policy. We have the first reading of the following. Policy 122 and extracurricular activities. Policy 123, interscholastic athletics. Policy 218, student discipline. 222, prohibition of tobacco use. 227, controlled substances and paraphernalia. 227.1, vaporizers, e-cigarettes, et cetera. 233, suspension and expulsion. These changes are also reflected in revisions to the kindergarten-through-12th-grade code of conduct and discipline code and the guidelines for consistent assignment and progressive discipline. And I so move, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rossetti, any discussion on these policies? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, the item is passed seven to zero. We have several items for action in curriculum. Are there any items that any board members would like me to carve out for extended discussion? Okay. So we have the approval of related service provider contracts for last year. We have the approval of related service provider contracts for the 2019 extended school year and the 1920 school year. We have the approval of tuition contracts for the 2019 extended school year and the 1920 school year. Items D through F are the approval of three educational services agreements. And items G through H are the approval of two educational research projects. And all of these items are described as attached to the agenda or described in the agenda itself. Do I have a motion for these items? Dr. Downey, and a second? Ms. Semino, any discussion on these items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The item is passed seven to zero. We have several items for action in finance. And again, are there any individual items that any board And again, are there any individual items that any board member would like to carve out? Okay. We have the approval of payments to vendors for June 19 through August 13. We have the approval of the June Treasurer's Report. We have the acknowledgment of receipt of various financial statements as listed for June and July. We have the approval of the submission of Plan Con K paperwork to PDE related to the refunding of a general obligation bond. We have the approval of the voting delegates to the PSBA conference in October. Many thanks to Chapin Semino and Damon Orsetti for their service in this. We have the approval of a contract with Robert Hath to provide temporary accounting personnel. We have the approval of the Paper Cut Order Agreement and Statement of Work with Rico to facilitate printing from Chromebooks. We have the approval of agreements with Core Power for UPS, which is Uninterruptible Power Supply Systems at Wes and NPE. We have the approval of an independent contractor agreement with Deirdre Abramson to serve as a communication specialist for the school year, and I saw her here earlier. Okay, there she is. And all of these items are attached or described in the agenda? Do I have a motion for these items? Ms. Walkman, and a second? Dr. Rieger, any discussion on these items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay? The item passed seven to zero. Which brings us to audience recognition again. Now, is there anyone who would like to speak to a topic we did not just vote on? Okay, if you want to speak, please go to the podium, and please know that what you say will be broadcast and recorded, it will be available on the website for the future. Only district residents or taxpayers have the privilege to speak, and by law, the purpose of public comment is to address the board on matters that may come before the board for its consideration, and therefore, the content should be limited to things that the board has some say in. And, okay, so if you could please give your name and address?
My name is Joanne Cortese, and I live at 212 Ridgewood Road, Post Office Media, PA.
Okay, and what would you like us to know?
I'd like you to consider a change in the annual requirement for the multiple occupancy registration submission for multi-generational households. The annual requirement puts an unnecessary burden on taxpayers. I understand the requirement for the information, but the form does require notification for change in status. What I would suggest maybe possibly require the change or the form when changing schools for multi-generational households. I've lived in this district for 35 years, my daughter has lived in our home for 34 years, and my grandson has lived in our home for his 10 years. I believe the district is acting with a bias against females. I was told we were selected for this registration because my grandson has a different last name, and I know other multi-general families in this community that are not doing this registration because they have sons and their grandchildren have the same name. So for this reason, I wish that the burden would be reduced because the annual requirement is just a little bit ridiculous.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting us know about this. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
And by the way, I have sent emails to the board on numerous occasions, and I have never received any response, FYI.
I have not received, the board has not received, an email from you? My apologies. I cannot prove that you have not sent, I can only state that the board has not received. Okay. Is there any old business tonight? Yeah, Dr. Rieger?
I was wondering, Dr. Brown, could you give us an update on the trainer, the new trainer at the high school? Do we have anything on that?
Yes, we have a trainer.
We have a trainer?
I have not yet met him, but I saw him in, we do have a trainer. He's actually, he's in early, too, he's in this morning, it's about quarter to seven, maybe a little sooner, but we do have a trainer, and I think I've seen two trainers then actually at the high school.
I was just wondering how it was going, if you could eventually let the public know how it's going with the new trainer, so it would ease their fears. Okay, thanks.
I guess, Dr. Brown, I have one more question for you, since our focus topic for the meeting that didn't happen last month was about graduation. Do you have an update on what's happening with that?
In the interest of time and everyone's evening, I'll keep this brief. Graduation will be on Friday, June 5. The plan for the 1920 School Year and this information is going to be, well, I guess it's going to be public now, is that we will continue, we'll plan to move forward with Newman for 1920, and look for a way to explore other options for 2021. The survey results were as close to split down the middle as you could get with Newman and Kingfield, and one of the reasons for that consideration was we just, I felt like we needed a little bit more time to make a strong plan for Kingfield. And the class size of this graduating class, we can still fit in Newman, that gives us another year plus to figure out 2021. So that's, that's the update. Friday was the priority, graduating on Friday.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Any other old business tonight? Any new business? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.